Good evening, welcome to the Joliet Junior College Board of Trustees Meeting dated Wednesday, August 16th, 2023. Want to welcome everyone here, especially any guests we have. I know we look a little bit different, thanks to the buildings and grounds. I feel so much farther away, but, so Aileen, unfortunately, each time I look up, I'll be looking right at you. It means nothing, it's just limited vision and... Call to order. Karen, can you do the roll?
Trustee Broderick?
Present.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Present.
Trustee Harris?
Present.
Trustee Lee?
Here.
Trustee Mahalik?
Present.
Trustee Morales?
Here.
Trustee Ellis?
Present.
Trustee Bozinski?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Again, welcome. Vice Chairwoman Elisa Morales is going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item 1.04. Karen, do we have any public comments?
None that I'm aware of.
Item 1.05, Communications.
Um, yes.
Yep, Chairman, I can take it from here. Thank you. I'm going to invite Kelly Rotertinelli to tee this one up.
Good evening, everybody. As you know, we've initiated a really lovely tradition here of kicking off our board meetings and showcasing an external partnership, and this one has been no exception in being that it's exceptional. And it's really kind of new to the college. And so what we've done is invited Dr. Natalie Coleman. She's the CEO of the After the Peanut Foundation, which focuses heavily on equity and STEAM education. And Dr. Namua and I had the pleasure of giving her a tour specifically of the Romeoville campus, where we talked a lot about camps for kids and how we may be able to offer some continuing education for her teachers. So with that, I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Natalie Coleman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Natalie Coleman. I appreciate this time, President Namua. Kelly, you've been excellent, and to the trustees that are on the board. I have strong ties to Joliet and to Juco, actually. My mother taught GED classes down at the Renaissance Center. I don't know what, I know it's a different name now, but I grew up with it being called the Renaissance Center, right there with Chicken and Spice, which is no longer there either. You know, I was young and I would go down there, she would have to take me for something. I actually taught SAT prep here at Juco when I was a younger educator, and I took a few classes here as well, chemistry classes. So, strong ties to Joliet, strong ties to Joliet Junior College. And I'm here today to talk about the partnership that is going to be extremely beneficial, I believe, to the community, to the county, and probably to the nation. And I stand here, I'm a proud veteran, a proud leader, I'm a county board member, I got to get out of here for one of those meetings tonight, but leadership is a natural thing to me. And in these leadership positions that I've had, as a teacher, as an educator, I've seen the need to close not the learning gap, not the education gap, not the standardized test scores gap, it's an opportunity gap. There's an opportunity gap in STEAM education, and it is magnified in minority communities. There's a STEM crisis in America. In 2025, over 3.5 million STEM jobs will need to be filled, okay? There's also a problem in elementary education, and not on purpose, but teachers are not required to have degrees in science. They have a degree in elementary education, and they may take one or two courses in a science class. And so the goal of this partnership, which is entitled Full STEAM Ahead, is to provide those teachers with 40 hours of STEM education, and across not just robotics and coding, those are two heavy-hit STEM areas, but we're going to also look at VR, and AI, and engineering, and biomedical science. And we want to make sure that this partnership is strong and long-lasting. There is not a K-5 STEM degree at any of the colleges in Will County. I know this. I work at Governor State. Here I am with a partnership with Juco, I have connections to Lewis, so I see a lot of Will County. So this is an opportunity to be the first in this area to do that. This is beneficial to Joliet Junior College because it's going to enhance the programs that you can offer, it's going to enhance teachers' education who can come here from around the area even further if they like. The workshops that are going to be offered will be by those who are in the field. While I have a chemistry degree, and I taught chemistry and physics, I do not know everything about STEM, right? And I can't train everyone on everything. So I have, over the last probably decade, I started this company in 2014, the foundation in 2017, and I've met a variety of individuals who are excellent at what they do, and that's who the teachers will be in front of. The other pieces, connections that you probably already have are going to be enhanced. ExxonMobil, Sitco, the museum downtown, we even, we're even bringing in the Rialto Square Theater into this because we're going to do a engineer scavenger hunt there. Also, the Will County Health Department. Another piece is community engagement. Clearly, we're going to talk big and bold about this because I think it is a huge leap in what is needed for K-5 teachers. Finally, the teachers that come here will be required, for those 40 hours for the program, to also return to their school or work in a program that we find over the summer, where they have to give 40 hours, pay 40 hours, and use what they learn with students. And not just any students, it's going to be students from underserved communities, and that's rural areas, that could be a socioeconomic thing, it's not just about race. The last thing I want to say, and the reason I'm focusing on K-5, I was an administrator for K. Joliet Public Schools District 86. Teachers sometimes are fearful about what they don't know, so that's why we have to equip them. The other piece is the turning point in STEM education for young people is between third, fourth, and fifth grade. So we have to attack this at a lower level, because then those students can go to another program in junior high that can be connected to Juco, and then to high school, and then possibly be students here at Joliet Junior College. So that's the final benefit, I think, that we are going to see when we have these students who have teachers in front of them that care. Already talked in great detail with Dr. Rouse over at Joliet Public Schools District 86 about targeting the Joliet schools first. I mean, this is going to be open to Bolingbrook and Romeoville and all around Will County, but I know how it is to start something small and then to expand. So I truly appreciate everyone's time. I am very, very hyped about this, and I'm excited. There's also support from our state legislators, Natalie Manley, Maia Caple, who used to be an educator, as well as DeeDee Avalar. So it's, it's been a long time coming. Like I said, I'm born and raised here, this is something that is near and dear to me, and I'm going to make sure that this partnership is one of the best that Juco has ever seen. Thank you. Did any, I meant to ask, did anyone have any questions or comments? I'm sorry. The program is called Full STEAM Ahead.
I'd just like to say thank you so much for having that vision, and I've seen, but you're far ahead of the curve, and I think being the first also in Joliet, and starting with Joliet Public District 86 School, definitely puts Joliet on that, you know, platform that we've been on as being, you know, leaders in education. So thank you, Dr. Coleman, we're going to miss you on the Will County Board, but thank you so much for everything that you contribute to the community. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Item 1.06, the chair's request for a closed session under 2C1, 2C2, 2C11, and 2C21. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
For the purposes of?
2C1, 2C2, 2C11, and 2C21.
Which is defined?
If you know what it is, go ahead and mention it.
I'm just asking, so that we have it clear, so that we know what it is.
Personnel issues, litigation, or do a closed session.
Thank you. You ready to vote?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
So we're going to leave the room. We anticipated being approximately 40 to 45 minutes, but things can change once we get in there.
Custer.
Yep, yep, yep.
We are back. I apologize, it was closer to an hour than the 45 minutes. I stand corrected because Karen had told me to say an hour, and I says, no, we'll be done in 45 minutes. That'll be the last estimate from me. We're going to return to public session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bozinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.1, a moment of silence.
Chairman Bozinski, thank you. Today, I'm asking the college community to join us in a moment of silence for the following individuals. Marilyn Henneff, retiree, professor of mathematics from 1974 to 1978, and the aunt of James Henneff, adjunct instructor in history, social, and behavioral sciences. Anthony Marino, father of Emily Marino, our assistant athletic director and head softball coach. John Worta Sr., grandfather of April Quantrono, enrollment specialist. Hatzie Lin, retiree in collection management in the library. And John Stobart, retiree, professor of English from 1961 to 1999.
And to everyone in Hawaii.
Chairman, thank you.
Item 1.2, selected reports. 1.2.1, Board of Trustees' Approval of Hispanic Heritage Month Proclamation.
Good evening, Chairman Bozinski, Board of Trustees, President Namua, and JJC Community. Before I introduce the student who will be reading the proclamation, I would like to share some ongoing initiatives that JJC is engaged with as an emerging Hispanic-serving institution. At the national level, we are active members of both HACU and the National Community College Hispanic Council. Both at the policy level and funding level, these organizations are strong advocates for Latinx students. Both advocate for the expansion of educational opportunities to increase the academic attainment of Hispanic and Latinx students. Locally, JJC continues to be committed to strengthening the professional development opportunities for our team members and our students. I am proud to share that Erica Reyes, Director of Academic Intervention and Accommodation Services, was recently selected to participate in the 2023 National Community College Hispanic Council Fellowship. This is a great opportunity to engage with colleagues from across the country and share initiatives that will positively impact the Hispanic and Latinx communities we serve. There are only 25 selected fellows at the national level, and we have one of them at JJC. So with that said, I would like to introduce the student who will be reading the proclamation, but today we will have a reading in Spanish and in English. So the student will do the version in English, and I'll be reading the one in Spanish. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Angelita Arsate. She is a sophomore at JJC, physical therapy, would like to be a, she's studying kinesiology at the moment, and would like to be a physical therapist. She is a public relations chair for Latinos Unidos and a CCC representative for Latinos Unidos. In her free time, she enjoys powerlifting and hopes to compete in the future, so.
Thank you. Whereas citizens of the Hispanic ancestry comprise a significant percentage of the residents of Illinois Community College District Number 525, and whereas it is the goal of Joliet Junior College to provide its students with a comprehensive curricular and co-curricular educational experience with consideration given to the contributions of all socially identifiable groups within American history and culture, and whereas the contributions of the citizens of the Hispanic ancestry to the history and culture of the United States are invaluable and abundant. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois hereby proclaims September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month in Illinois Community College District Number 525, adopted this 16th day of August 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Considerando que los ciudadanos de ascendencia hispana conforman un alto porcentaje de las personas residiendo en el distrito 525 de los colegios comunitarios de Illinois. Considerando que el objetivo de Joliet Junior College es proporcionar a sus estudiantes una experiencia educativa, curricular y no curricular integral, teniendo en cuenta todas las contribuciones de todos los grupos socialmente identificables dentro de la historia de la cultura estadounidense. Considerando que las contribuciones de los ciudadanos de ascendencia hispana a la historia y cultura de los Estados Unidos es invaluable y abundante. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que la junta directiva del distrito 525 del colegio comunitario de Illinois, Joliet Junior College, condados de Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook en el estado de Illinois, por la presente proclama que del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre se declara mes de la herencia hispana en el distrito de colegios comunitarios de Illinois número 525, adoptada este 16 de agosto del 2023. Gracias.
Muchas gracias a ambos. Gracias.
Thank you. So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you. Item 1.2.2, Board Approval of Trustee, I'm sorry, Board of Trustees' Approval of Carl Buck Appreciation Proclamation. Dr. Namua?
We're going to, we're going to do, we're going to work together on this one, Chairman, but let me first start by saying, hear ye, hear ye. Yes, I will. I'm sorry, I'm going to choke. There you go. You got it.
The proclamation of appreciation, whereas Mr. Carl Buck has served the college legal counsel for seven years, and whereas Mr. Buck, in addition to his legal expertise, has served as a trusted strategic advisor, continuously ensuring the best outcome for the college and its students, and whereas Mr. Buck has been a tireless advocate of the JJC community...
We're having some technical difficulties at the cabinet level, Chairman. Apologies.
I'll repeat that last one. Whereas Mr. Buck has been a tireless advocate of the JJC community and education at all levels, and whereas Mr. Buck was born and raised in Plainfield and has since contributed continuously to numerous civic and local agencies to enhance our community, and whereas Mr. Buck is a past president of the Plainfield Area Chamber of Commerce, where he was named the Chamber's Advocate of the Year in 2005. In 2013, he received the Plainfield School District 202 CAPE Award for Volunteer of the Year after serving as PTO president in Indian Trail Middle School, or at Indian Trail Middle School. Mr. Buck's pro bono clients include the Humane Society of Will County and Pink Heels Joliet Chapter, and whereas Mr. Buck has supported the college's transformation through new facilities, programs, trustee elections, and appointments while supporting two college presidents during his tenure, and whereas the service and support provided by Mr. Buck has left an indelible mark on the college's history and ensured its continued success into the future. Now therefore be it resolved that on, that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Mr. Buck for his distinguished legal service and for his unique and special support of Joliet Junior College, adopted this 16th day of August 2023. Do I have a motion?
Need a motion.
So moved. Second.
There's a fight over this one, yep.
I'm mad I didn't get to read it.
You can, it's in your book.
Motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And Chairman, don't you have something?
Yes, yes. Chairman, while you're retrieving that, on behalf of a grateful administration, Carl, all the work you've done for this college in such extraordinary ways, we wish you the absolute best, and thank you so much for your incredible service to Joliet Junior College.
Thank you.
This is really awesome, because most attorneys get ridden out on a rail when they have to leave. So this is truly fantastic. I really appreciate it. And when I was watching this all happen, and I looked back and I saw this, I thought, oh my God. Attorneys aren't supposed to cry at meetings. There's no crying in the law. But truthfully, the best part about being at JJC and serving as your attorney has been working with everybody here, and not just the elected officials, which, you know, we've had our disagreements, we've had our agreements, we've worked together, it's been awesome, and I've truly enjoyed it, and I've learned from each one of you in very, in many different ways. But also, when I look out in the crowd and I see, you know, all of you, who we have gone into the trenches and peaks and valleys, you know, good times and bad times, and I would say the same thing. I'm a better lawyer and a better person because of the service at Joliet Junior College. I love the mission, I think it's phenomenal, and the direction that the college is going in with the elected leadership and the professional leadership is absolutely fantastic, and you're going to do great things. But this has been a great experience, and for me and my family, thank you very much. Thank you. Are all these curls that you... I got to say, this side looks great, this side looks great, but this side... I like it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hey, I put on a suit today for this.
That's right. Coordinated perfectly.
Item 1.2.3, the ERP restart update by Dr. Ron Farmer.
Just keeping it on.
You want to tee it off, Dr. Namua?
Yes, just as a reminder to the board, thank you, Dr. Farmer, thank you, Chairman. As a reminder to the board, in April, we gave an update, a detailed update on the plan to restart the implementation of our Enterprise Resource Planning Initiative program, and we've made some considerable progress since then, and we're happy to share some of that progress with the board today. Dr. Farmer, take it away.
Wonderful, thank you. So good evening, Trustee Bozinski, Trustee of the Board and Joliet Junior College community, hello everyone. As Dr. Namua mentioned, I'm here this evening to provide an update regarding our ERP restart. So before I jump into my presentation, I just want to stress to the Board today, that's not...
Stress to the Board today, perfect, that this presentation will focus on how we will move forward as a team to build a stronger infrastructure for the ERP. So I will not be discussing a lot of the operational aspect of the project, so I want to stress that to you today. So I want to take a moment, and Dr. Namua, I'm looking directly at you, I just want to thank you, including the Board, for really supporting the I-V and V process. Let me tell you, that process really provided a wonderful, comprehensive roadmap for us as we move forward with the ERP restart. So, one of the most important aspects that Dr. Namua and I have been discussing about the restart is that it's really important for us to continue to have open communication, just not with the Board, and I'm looking again, but also with the college community. And whenever we talk about communication, we also want to make sure that that communication is transparent as well. And then also, probably the most important aspect of this restart is really honoring the voices of the employees who are closest to the project. I think that was one of our biggest challenges in the past, so moving forward, we will continue to partner with our employees to ensure that their voices are heard throughout this process. So Board of Trustees, just as a reminder, quickly, here, they're sliding in here, that's different. So if you recall, we decided as a Board, including a college community, to reengage Alucion, that is our company, when we realized that the workday projects specifically for students really did not meet the institutional needs for us, including our students. Our strategic goal moving forward is to modernize SIS, we call that SAS, and move us into the cloud. I am very happy to report today that we have executed the Statement of Work contract with Alucion, and it was a wonderful process. I have to commend three individuals, one, Karen Kissel, please quickly just raise your hand, and also Matt Stevenson, please, and finally, Tim Rustler, for working tireless every single day to really review the statement of work to ensure that we have a strong process and some safety nets moving forward. And then also, Alucion, they're wonderful colleagues and partners, they continue to work in partnership with us to ensure that we move this project forward together and collaboratively. So a second key milestone that I would like to highlight this evening is the approval of two important individuals or a company for this project, our two project managers. One project manager specifically will focus on HCM and also finance from a workday standpoint, and the second one will focus on our student side of the house. So I want to call your attention, Board members, to Agenda Item 3.212, that really speaks to the importance of moving forward with two project managers. I like to also start off by noting that our former project manager, Jerome Gatlock, has completed his workday assignment with us at the college, and so that's why we are excited about moving forward with our new project managers. So I want to take a moment, just really quickly, just to talk about the RFP process, because as Dr. Namua and I spoke about time after time, we want to make sure that the stakeholders, the end users, those individuals who are closest to the project, has a voice in the process. So we had over 21 vendors when we moved forward with the RFP process, and we shortlisted about five companies to interview. And out of those interviews, I want to acknowledge one other person, Judy Conley, where are you? Judy Conley, once again, was one of those core members on the team, and she wanted to remind us that it was important to hear the voices of the entire college community. So we invited key stakeholders to participate in the ERFP, ERFP process. So we had over 31 employees who participated in the interview process. So that really speaks to the investment in the buy-in that some of our employees are extremely excited about to be a part of the process. So as a result of our comprehensive process, I present to you Campus Works. Campus Works is the vendor that we want to lean into for our project managers. Again, this was voted upon with our core committee and also from our employees who participated in the interview process. So really, I want to take a real important moment to talk about something that's really important to us, and this is where we have what we call courageous conversations, right, everyone? Building trust and confidence as we move forward with this project is really important to us, specifically to Dr. Namua, myself, and also the administration. We know in the past, we've had some hiccups, if I can couch it from that standpoint, but we've made a commitment to keep the Board, including the college community, at the center of this project. So one important aspect that we've decided to move forward on is that we've identified a chair liaison, and I believe that is Chairman Bozinski will serve as the chair liaison. He has been designated as the ERP restart liaison for the college. Along with the rest of the Board members, we will continue to provide him updates as we move forward with this project. And then also, we will be presenting you an ERP formalized budget process, a clean budget, starting from the beginning. And then finally, but not least, a new governance structure, which is extremely important. And in that governance structure, we also will look at making sure that we look at our staffing, backfill, because implementation fatigue is real, and most of our staff members are feeling fatigue with the ERP restart, and we want to make sure that we continue to provide them ongoing support as we move forward together. So one thing I want to mention lastly is really embracing this journey ahead. I mean, the journey has been difficult, courageous conversation, right? courageous conversation, right? But I want to make sure, as a team, and this includes the board, that we continue to build a strong infrastructure. And when we deal with challenges, we can deal with those challenges with clear confidence as a collective group. So we will lean into the experts of our staff members who are intimately involved in the process, once again honoring their voices, but also leverage the talent of Campus Work, a premier company, I will continue to say that, with years and years of higher education experience. So I just want to stress that we will continue to lean into them as well. And so, just for your benefit, today was very high level, how we're building the infrastructure. But I will come back to you, trust me. And I will prepare really a timeline with specific milestones, because I think when we reach a milestone, we need to celebrate that milestone. Also, a very finalized budget that we will present to the board. And finally, a formalized governance structure. So I just want to stress to all of you, and you've heard this time after time from Dr. Namou, including myself, is that a successful college is strengthened by a successful board. And I truly believe that with this new ERP restart, and the fact that we're focusing on a strong infrastructure and a sustainable infrastructure, I truly believe that we can move forward together. So this evening, I just want to recognize once again Dr. Namou, because he's our president. And trust me, he did not anticipate this. And I'm so happy that he's still here with us. All right? And then also, I just want to recognize all of our, our staff employees who continue to move forward and really provide resilience and confidence in the administration's ability to move this forward, including the board. So as I conclude my presentation, I just want to assure the board that as the executive vice president, I will continue to move this project forward with confidence. I will lean into the support of all the wonderful voices and talents here at Joliet Junior College. But most importantly, Board members, I hope that we have your support. I'm going to repeat that, your support as we move forward. So Dr. Namou, I just want to take one moment just to thank everyone for their dedication. Once again, a lot of individuals here today who've been intimately involved in the ERP process and now the restart. And then also thank the board for your commitment. And at this time, I'll be willing to entertain any questions, any comments, or any engagement. Thank you, Dr. Namou.
At this time, does the board have any questions?
Yes.
You mentioned milestones, which I'm glad to see because I did ask about that. The roadmap, will that then define those milestones so that we are meeting all of those deadline dates? And if we don't, who will then end up being responsible? Who's going to be the responsible parties?
Very good question. So to respond to your question about the roadmaps and also the milestones, that is, we have to have roadmaps in a milestone. In terms of accountability, I think we all are accountable. You know, Joliet Junior College will own this project. Campus Works will be a partner that will work side by side with us. But the accountability will be on us, JJC.
Good. And as far as my focus and concern has always been on, to make sure that our HR and finance modules are stable.
Mm-hmm.
And to see minimum number of issues brought up when we do have this new, new cycle brought into it. And that, the other question I have is on colleague. We're going back to colleague, not going to workday. Is our student population equipped for colleague? Or did we need to, or is it not? Because in assessing different programs, they tell you which ones are, which ones are for bigger schools, which ones are for middle-sized, which ones are for small schools. Is colleague adequate for us?
Colleague is adequate for us. We are a colleague institution right now.
Okay.
And so, in, in fact, most of the Illinois community colleges are utilizing colleague. And so, as we move to the cloud, I'm sure there will be opportunities to enhance our experience for our student. But we are a colleague institution, so we will be fine.
Good. And as far as the transformation, we have the tools and the technology in order to achieve these?
We are building the infrastructure, and we will review those tools and those resources, including staffing analysis, to make sure we have the resources in terms of human resources and people. I'll be able to respond to that question a little bit more thoroughly, once we sit down with Alucian and we start moving forward with our listening tour and getting information from the staff members about where we stand with our program.
And will we develop the roadmap?
We always develop the roadmap.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the trustees?
I just want to say thank you, Dr. Farmer, Dr. Namou. Again, I'm happy you're still here, too. And Karen, Tim, Matt, everyone that's worked on this, thank you for your patience. I know this is daunting task and we are, you have the board's support. We understand, we went through some challenges and we are moving forward, cleaning up spilt milk and full steam ahead. So thank you for everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may? So Trustee Morales, I too am thankful that I'm still here.
So is Tiana.
And so is my family. And Dr. Farmer, thank you again for all your good work and the leaders who have been responsible for this. I want to, you know, take the opportunity to remind the board that an ERP implementation is among the most, if not the most challenging, sophisticated, complex thing an institution can undertake over its history. So I want to set some clear expectations that things may not run perfectly, go perfectly all the time. And I know, I know. You know, we all know that, and we all realize that. What you have from us, though, is a commitment to be transparent when challenges arise. So I just wanted to emphasize and make that final point, and commitment to you all as a board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Namou, if I could go off script for a moment?
Uh-oh.
And just go around and have the board emphasize their commitment by shaking my hand.
Oh, wow. Chairman, that's, okay. This is...
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Do I have a handshake, too?
No, I can't. Oh, come on, come on.
I know.
I see how you wear these all, all day long. They're pretty comfortable.
Yeah, right?
I know.
I think I'm going to stick with it. I don't know.
I don't want to comment, Jake, but you look like a tippy-down bear.
That's a compliment. Trustee Mahalik, that's a compliment.
I'm dedicated to the commitment of the bowtie tonight, so I'm just going to...
Item 1.2.4, the Faculty Union Report. Dr. Bob Marsink.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Well, first of all, I, there are a few things, and I won't be long, but there are a few things I want to cover. First of all, I want to thank Carl. He's been a good man to work with over the last seven years. He's, he's given this board and this administration great advice, has worked with us through some things that we had to work through, some memorandums of, Memoranda of Understanding, et cetera, memorandums. I should know that. I teach English. And has just been a really calming and, and professional presence at all the meetings. And I just want you to know, I appreciate that. Couple of things. Oh, also, we're looking forward, Dr. Farmer, to, faculty's looking forward to playing our role in, in, in the ERP project. We are glad that, to see that we're moving forward and, and, and dealing with the things that we need to deal with. So thank you for that. And I want to, I want to mention a couple of people. One is mentioned in the, a gentleman passed away, John Stobart, who was a faculty member here for thirty, oh, 38 years. And we don't, oftentimes, we, we leave places and, and five years later, people forget who we are. And, you know, we move on because that's life, you know? And we all want to be remembered. And, but we have to realize that time moves on. But John should be remembered. John, not only did he teach here for 38 years, he was also started our Student Literary Magazine called The Word Eater. He was also, was in my position for a number of years as president of the AFT. And he never lost contact with the institution. He was regularly involved with the institution, and even up until recent years, was on campus just doing literary things and things of that sort. And he's also, and I confirmed this with Christie earlier, I wanted to make sure, because it's been a little while, he's one of the Susan H. Wood recipients. So he's in the Susan H. Wood Hall of Fame. So John is one of the people who, when I first got here, helped me to, to learn the ropes, taught me some of the things I needed to learn. And I'm talking about in the English department. And he, he should be remembered. And I hope he is. And Marilyn Henneff, also, former, also a former officer of this union, passed away. And I didn't know Marilyn nearly as well, but she was an excellent faculty member here. And we lost another faculty member who's not mentioned this evening, but that's because I don't think it was really publicized very much, but former faculty member named John Schroeder from the Natural Sciences Department. So another good man who dedicated his career to JJC. So I just wanted those folks to be remembered. Also, I was excited to hear Dr. Coleman speak about the Full Steam Ahead program. And, and we're, I don't know exactly what role we will have in that, but it's, I, she made a heck of a lot of sense up here. And, and I really hope that that takes off and, and helps our students, especially the young students, get that enthusiasm for the STEM programs at a younger age. And so that, once they get to middle school and high school, they're really ready to take, take that on. The last thing is just that we're starting next week classes. We're here this week for the, for the opening week. Used to be, we used to call it Professional Development Week, but, and we're, we had very interesting convocation this morning. We built some interesting structures. I, I didn't do a whole lot of the work, but I, I watched very closely, as others did. I helped a little bit. But it was interesting. It was fun. And it was a nice way to start the semester. We're all looking forward to the new semester. We always, this is the exciting time of the year when the new students are coming in and faculty are all getting organized. And next week is, is go time, and we'll be ready for it. So thank you, as always, and we'll see you next month. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1.2.5, Adjunct Faculty Union Report. Ms. Laura Dischow.
Hello. Nice to see everyone again. I, I came in here tonight kind of wondering what it was I was going to say. And then I listened to Dr. Coleman talk about this Full Steam Ahead and was really excited. I've been in chemical education my entire career. And so I've been so aware of the need to bring elementary school teachers into that, into that role. I, I have seen, I'm sorry, high school and college students who are just getting excited about science because they're, they didn't have that experience as young students. So this is, I think, a real opportunity for us to make progress in that area and work with, with that group and, and really make a difference. Other than that, I echo Dr. Marsink in that we're looking forward to the start of the new semester. We have the Adjunct Faculty Dinner and Mini Conference tomorrow night. So that should be a great event as well. And everything is looking up at this time of year. So I hope that we have a great start. And that's all I have to say. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Item 1.3, minutes. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on June 14th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
I do have a addition. Under the 5.3 Representative of the ICCTA, ACCT report, it should be noted, the report came back, the ICC training that we had, which was part of our training, which we should mention who our trustees were that were there, so that that's covered, which was, which was Chairman Bosinski, Nancy Garcia, Michelle Lee, Diane Harris, Aisha, our student trustee, and myself. That should be added so that they see that we've met that. Because I know that we're trying to put that on our webpage, but we need, we should, if we're putting that, it was ICC, it was our, our related training, not ICCT training, but our related training for being trustees. And I do thank Diane for mentioning me on that. So I just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that.
Do you want to revise the motion to include the changes?
Motion to approve as amended.
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Thank you.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Gersi Agan?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bosinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 1.4, Approval of Agenda. Need a motion?
So moved. Second.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Gersi Agan?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bosinski?
Yes.
Motion's carried.
Item 1.5, Approval of Consent Agenda as Presented.
So moved. I do have some things that I'd like to have removed. First one is item 2.4.
Okay.
3.1, 3.2.12, and 3.4, page 16.
I'm going to pull 4.2.2. Any other items? Ready for a vote?
Ready? Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Gersi Agan?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bosinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Discussion on 2.4? Motion?
Second.
I can't do the motion.
Motion for move?
Second. Roberto, I know you're the one that put this out here, correct? Can you just, because this is the one that I had brought up last month that we were, from the ICCTA, that we needed to, to know about. When will you be having meetings? What's the course of action that we'll need? Because it says the recommendation, and yes, all of us trustees need to be on it. But in order for all of us on, I think we all need some type of an idea. So if you could just give us something of what it's, what it's going to be containing?
Yes, thank you for that question. I'm meeting with Dr. Namou tomorrow, and he will communicate with the board. But we have, we're planning on meeting October. We're planning on meeting March of next, or, or April of next year, and then October of next year, and have the report ready by the December deadline.
So we're meeting their deadlines then, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
Good. Because that was my concern from the ICCTA level, because we are, from the ICCTA, trying to get us removed, since we really don't want to be part of the focus of a decennial, because that's what they don't think we should be, because we're not a heavy taxing body. So thank you for your input.
Thank you.
Are we ready for vote?
Ready for a vote?
So moved.
Michelle, or, Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Gersi Agan?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Aye.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Bosinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have a motion for 3.1?
So moved.
Second.
I first, I first want to thank Karen Kissel and Dr. I first, I first want to thank Karen Kissel and Dr. Yolanda Farmer for sitting and going through all my concerns and questions. And I think to alleviate, I I taught, we talked about grants and the bills that show up that are grants. So I'm hoping that somehow in the new project management system that we can get the grants identified so that we're not asking if their bills are not, that they're related to the grants instead of the the way it's structured. I know that's a difficult, you know, way of it being presented right now, but I appreciate your full disclosure on that. And then, uh, Kelly Roder Tonnelli. I had talked to Dr. Namu about this. There's a lot of social media again that's showing up, and he concurred that another report would be great for us to see our ROI on all that's there, which he said you could probably do in October. And then, um, I did ask for translation and interpretation because we were past the six-month period that we said we would bring it back. Um, Dr. Farmer, I'm wondering if we can get a report as to, or Karen, as to the report of where we're at functionality and population-wise, so that we can see what that is all about. Then we had a lot of, uh, sponsorships for activities that we're at, and I don't know if that would fall under KRT, Kelly, or Karen, or Dr. Farmer. Um, if we could find out what the sponsorships include, so we as trustees are included in those sponsorships. If we are able to go to events or whatever, so that it enables us to know, so that if we do get a table, that it's not hit against our expense account, that it's included in. Those are things that I think we as trustees need to be watchful of, and I know Dr. Namu wants to include us more so whenever he can as trustees with him on the activities. So if we could get some type of report on sponsorships. And then the last thing that we used to have was report on memberships, whether it was chambers, rotary, national associations, or statewide associations, and a follow-up as to what we gather out of it, maybe on a quarterly basis. Um, I don't know if the rest of the group feels where I'm at, but this is what we were able to get before. So we saw, because we do spend a lot of money on sponsors, I mean, on memberships and chambers and rotaries and groups that we belong to. This way, we'd at least see what we're contact, what our contact in the community is, what our effects in those positions are. So if we could get something from that, from either Kelly, Dr. Farmer, or Karen, those are my my requests after going through the bills. Because I I would like to see de-minimize going through them so that we have those things that are readily accessible to us.
Sure thing. Chairman, if I may, uh, Trustee Broderick, we can absolutely provide that. And as you referenced, I think we've got on the schedule, um, a presentation that Kelly will do to the board in October around strategic engagement and to include many of the things you've you've referenced. So thank you absolutely.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, three point two point one two. So need a motion?
Motion. Jake. Have a second.
Second.
Can I talk?
Yeah.
We got the motions, okay. Um, first of all, Dr. Farmer, thank you so much for taking the time this afternoon to go through all of my questions. Dr. Namu and you both last night with my communications back and forth to help me understand. Because as you know, I was the one on a twenty nineteen board that lost a lot of faith because of what we went through for four and a half years. And my concern was that we create a stable environment, that we have the right things going forward and moving forward. And that's why I had recommended when I said the IVV, because I did recommend that as a solution to come in, because I thought we needed a third party to do that. And I've been very on top of it. We are going to present something with the with the ICCTA in November on RFPs and ERPs. So I appreciate all the detail and the concentration and more that you've delved into than you ever thought you would know, because it's definitely been embracing subject that I think all of us have embraced more so than we have. And being that said, the only thing that I was concerned about, and I think Karen addressed it, was the one point seven. And if we have the ability that we don't have to, you know, go the full amount, I'm okay with that. And I want to share my support because, yes, I was very, you know, on the on the edge, not knowing which way I was going last night, as I'm sure you could tell from my responses. So you will have my support. It's just I want you to know that this has been very rough on me. And picking this as one of my goals for the ICCTA president meant a lot to me. So I hope all of you can engage in November and come down and listen to all of the vendors. And we even have, which Dr. Namu is familiar with, um, Beyond Decademics, Matt Alex, who is also a person that is going to be available to us free of charge, who's had twenty-five years of experience with implementations and basically being the architect for systems. So I welcome and open that door still, because he worked at Maricopa with your chancellor there. I don't think we should forget that, and that should be an added part of something that we still think, because if it's free, I'm all for it. So, thank you.
Any comments, responses? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item's three point four, uh, page sixteen. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
At this, uh, point, I'd like you guys to go to page sixteen. This is the report that I keep asking about, especially for our insurance issues and everything, to make sure that we're on the right track. And I've asked Karen Kissel to give us a little bit of background. Um, if you look, last year's deficiency was five hundred and eleven thousand, which raised a concern for me. And I wanted to know where the the funds were going to be coming from. Karen addressed it, but I think she addressed it, she addressed it to the board. And every month in the bills, there's a, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield Stop Loss Provision. And if she could address that, Karen, would you gladly, as I've asked her earlier?
Sure, Trustee Broderick.
Thank you.
Um, so the report that you have in front of you is the Self Insurance Fund Report that we provide monthly. And as Trustee Broderick said, she asked for more detail, providing this report to you on a monthly basis. And I really think it's been helpful to see these numbers. On the top portion of the revenues, what you see is the contributions from the college, which means the employees, um, and what the college contributes. And then the miscellaneous revenues are those revenues that are associated with our stop-loss coverage. What we have is for PPO employees, and we have about five hundred of them. Um, the college is self-funded or self-insured for PPO. We pay the first two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of medical expenses for someone. If we go over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, our insurance kicks in and reimburses the college for those monies that those expenses go over, and that's in that line item. The corresponding cost of having the stop-loss insurance coverage is included in the PPO plan line, which is about forty thousand dollars a month. It's about ninety-eight dollars per person who's included in the PPO. And Trustee Broderick is right, last year we had a deficit in the plan. We do have a fund balance that's substantial that supports our, supports the insurance. Um, this year we had a surplus of four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Um, so, um, we've had a good year. As I understand it from history and having conversations with Jeff Heap, who really is the one who watches us so closely, is when the college went through COVID, um, employees just weren't going to the doctor as much, and we were able to build up a fund balance. Last year, employees started going back to the doctor and the costs went up. But we are hoping that they're stabilizing right now, so we're hoping it's going to have a good year going forward. Um, but I hope that provides the information that you need. If there's anything additional, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think that's good, because I think the reserve with the issue with the COVID, which I had already, you'd already told and shared with me, I think that's something that we needed to know where the reserve was coming from, which is good, because that gives us a stable idea of where the system, where this whole system is with our insurance for the, for everybody. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate, is the cost for Gallagher included in the PPO then too?
The cost for the stop-loss or the cost for Gallagher itself?
For the Gallagher itself, because I said, I heard where you said where the stop-loss provision was.
Jeff, can you help me out here? Oh, it's in the consulting line.
The consulting one?
Oh, Health Plan Consulting, AJG. It was five thousand dollars this month.
It's in the health plan, right? That's okay, that's, I just want to clarify. Good, okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate you giving us the detail on it.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion? We just need the roll.
We have a motion.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point two point two. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have no discussion. It's just conflict of interest, so I'll be abstaining from the vote. You want to call the roll?
Trustee Morales?
Yes.
Trustee Broderick?
Abstain.
Trustee Garcia-Gean?
Yes.
Trustee Harris?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Mahalik?
Yes.
Trustee Ellis?
Yes.
Trustee Budzinski?
Abstain, please.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, first reading of board policies, four point one point one, grades. Trustee?
Yes, so, uh, this policy is just a high level, a high-level overview and explanation of the availability and terminology relating to our grading system.
Item four point three, this item is added to accept agenda requests by trustees. Trustee Harris, do you have any agenda requests?
I don't.
Trustee Lee?
No.
Trustee Broderick?
Not this time.
Vice Chair Women?
No.
Miss and Nancy? Any chair?
No, I don't have any.
No.
Five point one, President's Report.
Chairman Budzinski, thank you so much, and trustees of the board, members of the JJC community. Wow, it was an incredible, incredible day. Um, I too am thankful that Dr. Coleman came here, and I know it was, it sounds like it was a little unclear as to JJC's role in all of this. Um, Dr. Coleman has an organization, as she referenced, that does stem, steam, steam, uh, camps. And, um, you know, we we made the pitch that as she's growing her organization and the demand for her camps is growing, that wow, wouldn't JJC be an incredible place to host those camps? So we're working through the details of what that might look like, but I believe we'll be hosting those camps up at the Romeo Ville campus. I think there's an opportunity for us to host them here as well, but Romeo Ville, I believe, is, uh, where we'll be hosting them. So, happy to report on that. Uh, what a day we've had, what a day. Before we get to that, I just want to highlight some of the things. It's been a few months, a couple of months since we've last been together. Welcome to the new boardroom, first of all. Really cool place, uh, space, rather. Since we last met, Dr. Farmer and I were able to receive an award on behalf of Joliet Junior College. You see, there are some prominent figures in this, um, image here. So thankful that the African American Business Association recognizes the strong partnership that Joliet Junior College has, um, and thankful that they recognized us for supporting their incredible, wonderful organization. And you'll see Mrs. Ross and President Ross there, uh, front and center. We're happy to reconnect with them at that event. I want to thank the trustees for, um, having a presence out west. Um, you know, over these last few months, as we expand and explore an expansion out west, uh, we were able to, uh, support Mayor Brown through the city of Morris State of the City event. And that's me just introducing him up there, talking to the community and sort of the the who's who, the leaders of Grundy County and, uh, the city of Morris about what expansion might look like and why it's time for JJC to explore that expansion. So that continues, and the group continues to make some great progress. We also celebrated the opening of Senator Tom Bennett and Congressman LaHood's, uh, office there. Uh, great supporters of JJC, and my hope is that they're right alongside us as we expand out west. And thanks to trustees Broderick, trustees Harris, I see trustee Morales there. If I'm missing anyone, I apologize, but thank you for those who were with us that day, those days. And as the Grundy County Expansion Group continues their work, uh, they had an opportunity to visit the Procter &amp; Gamble facility. As a reminder to the board, you've most likely heard this from me or Dr. Farmer a few times, but the Procter &amp; Gamble facility in the city of Morris is a one point three million square foot facility that is a state-of-the-art distribution center. In fact, their flagship state-of-the-art distribution center in the Chicagoland area. So we're very thankful to have them and their representation on the Grundy County Expansion Group. And the work of that group, as I mentioned earlier, continues. So shout out to those who are participating on our leadership team here, and of course, members, uh, prominent members of Grundy County participating as well. If you've not seen this, I think this is certainly something to be celebrated. I've had people mention that they've seen this on the Discovery Channel, on TLC, on, okay, on YouTube, okay. It's coming out now, so it's all over the place. And I'm really proud and want to commend our marketing team under Kelly Roder Tonnelli's leadership. The vision behind this is something I shared with the college community this morning, that we are a comprehensive community college. College is so much more than, uh, what we typically think of as college or historically have thought of as college. It includes all of the incredible transfer programs that we have, all of the incredible general education classes that serve as a foundation of this college and have for many years. However, however, this is college too. There we go. Oh, I don't have another one. Oh, that was this morning. Hmm, college is welding, college is vet tech, college is all the programs that Dean West is smiling about right now in his area. You know, all of those programs, um, I would offer our strategic strengths of JJC. And so when companies are looking to come into the area, whether it's Grundy or Will County, we're being highlighted. We being JJC are highlighted for those programs that align with the industries considering bringing billions and billions of dollars of economic impact to the area. So this is college. I don't know that I want to steal too much of Christie's thunder here. Uh, I'll just offer that the weather was fantastic for my second golf outing, a little different from last year, uh, but what a great event. What a great, um, celebration of the the foundation, number one, our athletic teams, number two. And just, uh, just an incredible day, a lot of fun. So kudos to Christie and her team. And see, I think, uh, trustee Broderick and trustee Harris are there, contractually also obligated to wear purple, and they've fulfilled that contractual obligation. So this one was interesting. My family and I had a chance to go to, uh, the planetarium here, the Trekman Planetarium, and it was really an incredible experience. We got a private showing of a seven-minute short film on Polynesian voyaging, the history of Polynesian voyaging. And I won't, I'm tempted to kind of go into it right now because I could. Uh, but suffice it to say, it was really an incredible experience that honored the history that is Native Hawaiian celestial navigation. And for any of you who are interested in that, uh, I believe the planetarium will be showing that in the fall. So just a plug for the planetarium, doing great things. Boy, Dr. Marsink, yes, it was a fun day this morning. Uh, this was Fall Convocation. I want to thank the trustees who were able to join us, kind of hear the message to kick off the start of the semester. In addition to participating, I'm curious as to whether we have pictures of the Marshmallow Challenge there, and we do. Around design thinking, around prototyping, around the iterative process that turns good ideas into great ideas, turns great ideas into extraordinary initiatives. There is a message behind that. I won't share that too much here in great detail, uh, but it is a framework, a set of tools that our leaders will begin to and have started using to do all of the incredible things that we're able to present to you all and the college community. Shout out to Team Trustee there. I don't know what the final measurement of your I don't know what the final measurement of your structure was, but I will not
It fell.
Enter that into the public record.
It fell.
Well, I didn't say that, trustee Broderick. I didn't say that. I believe the tallest structure, consisting of spaghetti, tape, string, and a marshmallow on top, 29 inches. 29 inches, yeah. And of course, what a day to celebrate today. Many of us in the, in the crowd here, many of our leaders traveled to one of four locations, the Boys and Girls Club, Habitat for Humanity, the Spanish Community Center, and the YMCA.
Bless you.
And our cabinet, our cabinet led the effort, taking approximately 20 to 25 employees on four buses out to different areas. So that's what you're seeing here, the build on, you know, with Habitat for Humanity, YMCA, as well as some other areas here. I just want to commend Roberto for his technique. It's fantastic. I mean, the focus that he has, it just should really, just should really be commended. Pat Van Dyne, power washing all of the tables. Apparently, the tables have never looked better in years and years and years at the Gallowich Y, and all hundreds, 300 camp, summer camp kids went through it and, you know, Pat power washed. How many tables would you say, Pat? About 700? About 700 tables. This is really an effort and a vision that strategically successful community colleges are deeply embedded in the communities they serve, and this was an effort. I was interviewed today from, by Denise from the Herald, and so there will most likely be an article, and this will get a lot of traction, so thank you for your support of this and for those who participated in this really incredible effort. And the Namuos built a console table that's on sale at Habitat for Humanity's Restore, and did so without arguing, not one time, not one time. All four of us got along, we successfully completed it, and Dean West insists that the dean team did two console tables, whereas the Namuos did only one.
Because we were defeated by you at the first.
That's right. The Namuos did complete the task the fastest, and I would like to enter that into the public record. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to highlight all the good work of our staff, all the good work we're doing at Joliet Junior College.
Item five point two, representative to the JJC Foundation, Ms. Christine Mulvey.
Good evening, trustees. I do want to say something. The Y needs to use washable markers. This grandma does not buy these kind of markers. I wash like three times, and I'm full of marker, but it was a great day. I'm very excited that our 50th anniversary celebration of the foundation is exactly one month away. You should have all received formal invitations in the mail, and I encourage all of you to make your reservations through Karen if you'd like to attend on September 15th. This event is not only a time to recognize the dedication of the foundation's support of the college for the past 50 years, but it's a night to celebrate some very significant community members. We will be recognizing our distinguished alum, Jen Howard, Susan H. Wood recipient, John Whiteendorf Jr., the J.D. Ross Award recipient, Mr. Michael Clark, and our significant corporate partner, ExxonMobil. We will be highlighting our excellent fine arts department. I'm excited to say the JJ community, JJC community band will be playing under the direction of its founder, retiree Jerry Lewis, up on the Rialto stage. Our steel band will be playing under the direction of Adam Cowgar, and our JJC choral group, under the direction of Annette O., will be singing in the rafters in the rotunda of the Rialto. As you know, classes start next Monday, and we are all working fast and furious in my office to get scholarships on our students' accounts. My goal for this academic year is to hit the $1 million mark in scholarship support for our students. As you know, the foundation also supported Dr. Namuo's 12 by 12 by 12 dual-credit initiative by giving the college $500,000. The 50th anniversary endowment has now hit $50,000, so we're excited about that. We're hoping to hit over 30 by the time we had the celebration, and we're at 50. We had a successful golf outing, as Dr. Namuo mentioned, on July 14th at Nettle Creek, and I also wanted to add that the first time in my 24 years of golf outings here, we were joined by our student trustee, and I really want to thank you for taking the time to join us. The foundation auditors from Warmer Rogers have finished our audit for the foundation for last year, and will be presenting that audit report to you at our next meeting in September. If there are no questions, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Five point three, representative to the ICCTA, Ms. Michelle Lee.
Thank you. I am happy to announce that JJC is being honored by being able to host the ICCTA Executive Committee Retreat this Friday and Saturday at our college. So we are all really excited about, about that. I hope that if you can be there, they'll be here for about two days, doing different activities, taking tours of the campus and things like that. So if you'd like to come out and meet the ICCTA, they will all be here. And then just because I think we will not have another meeting, I don't think, before September 7th, during the 9th, when the ICCTA has a meeting in Springfield. So just a heads up on that. And anyone who is attending, please have a short, under-five-minute report for when you attend.
Can I give an update, too?
I would appreciate if you would email me, and it's my job to give updates.
There's trustee updates later on.
As a president, I'm giving my ICCTA that you don't have, so if you don't mind.
Not at this time. We have another spot and agenda for you. Next report.
But Jim, some of the information that was presented needs to have a correction to it.
Okay, and you will have time when we have the trustee updates under five point eight. Five point four, student trustee report.
Hello, everyone. While I can only speak for myself, the summer has been beyond amazing. I want to express my gratitude for you all. Thanks for including me in numerous events involving JJC and the community. It was fantastic to observe the work of our administration in various departments this summer. Thanks for continuing to provide students with a safe space, resources, events, and activities. The first event I have the pleasure of highlighting is OSA's Paint and Picnic that took place on Thursday, June 15th. Students gathered at the Picnic Grove and enjoyed free food, a painting session, and community. On June 17th, I attended the Alba Juneteenth Gala, and I would like to congratulate Dr. Namuo and Dr. Farmer on receiving the Community Partner Award. It was a pleasure to support you both and dance with you, of course. Additionally, I was grateful for another chance to see Representative Lauren Underwood. On Tuesday, June 20th, I had the opportunity to participate in Trio's Summer Bridge Tour. There are multiple students from the surrounding high schools in attendance, and myself, along with other JJC students, had the privilege of taking the students on a tour and answering some questions about college and JJC. It was an honor to see those students supported, and I am grateful to have had the chance to participate. Thank you Dean Butler and the Trio ETS program. On June 21st, I had the opportunity to attend JJC's Entrepreneur and Business Centers Meet the Lenders Seminar. The panel included representatives from various banks and two EBC clients with successful lending experiences. They discussed topics such as credit, SBA programs, non-traditional sources of financing in real estate lending. The event had about 40 attendees. Additionally, I would like to mention that the EBC has relocated and is now fully staffed. On July 26th, the Sustainability Union and the Office of Student Activity organized Hammock Haven. Students and staff get, enjoyed hammocks, music, food, water balloons, and other activities at the Picnic Grove. Later that day, the JJC Steel Band, led by Professor Adam Cowgar, showcased music they had worked on during the eight-week summer semester that began in early June. Despite the short course duration, the band demonstrated mastery of the music and impressed with their skills. They played various genres of music, including cha-cha, salsa, contemporary, and funk, with the crowd favorite being the hit song from The Disney's Little Mermaid Under the Sea. On Friday, July 14th, I had the opportunity to attend the JJC Foundation and Athletics Golf Outing. This event was amazing, and I appreciate your work. I was thrilled to learn that the money goes back to students. Congratulations to Dr. Namuo on winning the 50/50 raffle and donating back to the foundation.
Okay, okay. Thanks for the last part.
On July 27th, I had the opportunity to attend the first Student Advisory Council meeting of the year in Springfield, and it was nice to meet other student trustees and discuss our college interests. We also talked about updates to the Mental Health Early Action on Campus Act passed by Governor Pritzker in 2019, and I opted out of running for officer position to focus on my work here at JJC. I'd like to say thank you to Dr. Amy Cuspo-Sims for joining me, and I thoroughly enjoyed our road trip. I am looking forward to Welcome Week, the first event the block party takes place on Tuesday, August 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll have music, food trucks, games, and department informational tables. And on Wednesday, August 23rd, there will be Picnic in the Grove and President's Welcome, with free food, live karaoke band, character artists, stuff critters, lawn games, informational tables, and a welcome from our president. Also that day, there will be a women's soccer game, JJC versus South Suburban College at 3:00 p.m. on our main campus soccer field. And on Thursday, August 24th, we'll have Wellness Day from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. with self-care activities, free food, music, crafts, walking meditation, goat yoga for registered students, therapy dogs, and more. There'll also be welcome back events at our extended campuses on Tuesday, August 29th at City Center, and on Thursday, August 31st at the Romeoville campus. Both campuses will offer free food, stuff critters, character artists, and department researched, resource tables. The JJC Entrepreneur and Business Center is hosting a Business Enterprise Program Certification Workshop on Tuesday, August 31st at our City Center campus. The workshop is designed to assist women, veterans, individuals with disabilities, and minorities in obtaining their BEP certification. There will be an English session at the Renaissance Center from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and a Spanish session at the library on the sixth floor from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. The Planetarium also has some upcoming shows, one tomorrow, Thursday, August 17th at 6:00 p.m., and they gave me permission to share that there have been exciting developments that have occurred this summer at the Dome. Since May, they've had almost 3,500 guests visit, 2,163 of them being field trippers, and they will be investing in new full dome films. They will be getting shows like Body Code and Microcosm, which are excellent productions that can benefit other college departments, such as anatomy, nursing, health, vet tech, and science. They want departments to know that they are welcome to collaborate and use the Dome for their students, too. They want to encourage involvement. Thank you all for your time. Welcome back, and enjoy, it's going to be a great school year.
Thank you.
Agenda item five point five, Building and Grounds Committee Report. Trustee Mahalik?
Would you like to do this one again, too? Because you said you want the tackle list again.
So the AHU replacement CBD project is moving forward. The state awarded 75% of the cost.
That, that's the one, so everyone knows, that's the project where the vendor was, did not fill out the paperwork properly, so we had to go to the second bid. So it's moving forward now, so the equipment will not be in anytime soon, though. It's about a year out, which is standard in the industry for a rooftop unit that size, so. But you're doing a good job. I don't need to jump in anymore. Go ahead, sir.
The environmental health and safety EHS office remodel went before the board tonight. The replaced tower at the ECC Playground will be rebidding on August 24th.
We didn't have enough, I don't think, I don't think we had any bidders for that, so we went out, and now we're going to see if we can get another, get some bids on that, so that's why I went back out the bid, so.
The bid for the sub D sump pit for groundwater closes tomorrow, and the remodel for the J-Building Restrooms bid bond, Surety Company is taking over now.
The J-Building Restrooms, the contractor that was awarded it actually defaulted, and they, they shut their doors and are out of business. So we luckily had, what's it called? It's not insurance, but it's.
Surety bond.
Surety bond on it, so, so they actually went out, they found another vendor, and they're going to come in and do it at the same cost, and if they're going to pay anything additional over the amount of the original bid, so we covered on that as well, so.
The replace for the G-Building, G-Building switchgear and replace B-Building main power transformer. The transformer just got delivered, and it will be scheduled soon.
So that equipment was, was this bid, we, we did that, that bid a couple months back, I believe, and we accepted it, and the equipment finally arrived, so, so we're going to get that work scheduled once, obviously, all the equipment and materials gets here, so.
The CNA lab at Romeoville will be done in a few weeks. The lab will open in spring. The adjunct faculty center remodel is coming along and should be done between two and three weeks, and the boardroom day is, of course, is finished, and I'd like to say thank you for your work.
That sums up the BNG committee report for this.
Question? Can you guys, because I know we went through the billing and that, and there was adjunct costs, and there was the boardroom cost, and I know that we went over boardroom costs. Can we get a breakdown just to see where our cost factors are at compared to what we approved from you guys, or do we get that from Karen?
We can, we'll, we'll get that. I think we're slightly, is it, is it?
We're, we're under budget, but I can provide a report to the entire board through Dr. Namuo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five point six, Board Policy Committee Report.
I just want to say thank you to Karen Kissel for stepping up to help me with, with that. We recently lost Tracy Morris, and so thank you, Karen. I look forward to working with you.
Clarify, we didn't lose Tracy Morris. Somebody reading these notes next year might be shocked. It feels like that sometimes. Yes, it was a great loss, but explain what happened to her.
So we didn't lose her, lose her, she received a job offer that she could not refuse, so we are all very, very happy for her. Sad, sad, losing good people, but we are very happy for her.
Thank you for clarifying that.
No, we lost them, sorry.
Five point seven, Finance Committee Report. Trustee Mahalik and trustee Morales.
Jay, I'm going to default you. Thank you.
Oh, you're going to default me?
Yes, sir.
Oh, perfect, sounds good. Are you sure you don't want to take this one?
No.
So, well, we just hit on a couple of topics today. We, the useful life of equipment and like furniture and stuff is, has, useful life in the college has, has determined each, each, each set of it, so now every, every, I think every, so every, every year or so, every couple of years, we go out and we resell all the stuff?
Every time we have surplus equipment and furniture that we have an opportunity to sell, we sell that furniture in the share. I think we made about $45,000.
We don't have a garage sale here. We actually, we sit on a government-approved website, and I, I heard that Matt said that there is a very, it's very reasonably priced, so if you guys, anyone can access it, so if you want to go out and buy something from JJC, go ahead and do that. So, and then we also talked about the Self-Maintenance Fund, which we just covered earlier today, so we don't need to touch on that anymore, so. So, other than that, that's the Finance Committee Report, so, thanks, Karen.
Trustee Mahalik?
Trustees can purchase things, too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I did see it, so lots of good things there.
Anyone can purchase it, so.
Right, thank you.
There's actually a picture of Dr. Namuo that's online for like.
See, Mahalik, what, can you, can you clarify that? Okay, you're kidding. All right. Thank you, thank you for that.
Item five point eight, trustee updates. Trustee Ellis, do you have any updates for the board?
No.
Trustee Mahalik?
No.
Trustee Garcia-Guian?
Not at this time.
Vice Chair?
Not at this time, thank you.
Trustee?
I do, some corrections on the ICCTA meeting that is going to happen at JJC Friday and Saturday. It's due to the fact that I was elected as president, and it's the executive committee that is meeting, so that means that it is all of our executive chairs, officers, and because it is JJC, it is the board that I have included to be invited. So unfortunately, it's up for the board. If you want to come to any open meetings, you're welcome to, but the activities are totally restricted to the executive group. We will have my goals, I have five goals that will be out there for this coming year as president, and Dr., I should say, J.D. Ross will be my moderator, who will be going out and collecting everybody that. out and collecting everybody that, the information from everyone that's in the group to give them feedback as to how we attain it and that. And then the next meeting will be for the ICCTA will be September 8th, and that will be in Springfield, and it's going to be on dual enrollment and dual credit, and our person that's going to be presented is going to be Dr. Namuow, so we're really excited about that. And that was one of my goals, just so you know, that it included the 12 by 12 that we have, so we're excited that that's going to be happening. And any of you board members that have any concerns or questions that you want answered during the roundtable, please provide those to me so that I can get them to the Vice President, and we can have those included in the roundtable, which happens on Friday of the September 7th meeting. And I just wanted to say, too, I know you mentioned, Dr. Namuow, quite a bit about all that we saw with Tom Bennett and Senator Hood, La Hood, but I'd also like to say thank you to Nancy Morton for the Grundy, Grundy, I mean, that economic development gathering was phenomenal. We totally enjoyed it, and I think it's great how we are doing the Western, you know, spring out to it. So thank you.
Trustee Lee.
No.
Trustee Harris?
No.
Item 5.9, the Chair Report. It's been actually a real exciting day. When I pulled out of the garage today, I live on the corner, and there was a bunch of kids standing there with these little bags. I didn't know what they were at first, then I realized they're backpacks. They were going back to school today. So they weren't selling anything or stealing anything, which is a good thing. This morning, when I got here to the campus, I was just thrilled at the energy of the faculty here to witness Dr. Namuow's convocation. But one thing I was really concerned about was you taught us how to build with marshmallows, noodles, and a string, and then sent people out to build houses for Habitat for Humanity. I think our training development might be a little different next year. But I do want to applaud what goes on behind the scenes. A lot of people come on the first day, they do not realize you really didn't get the summer off. They did, some of them were here for classes, but we know preparing for the first day of class, preparing for students coming in, learning what we learned last year and making sure that we enhance the experience for them this year. I know teachers don't get the time off that everyone thinks they do. I do have a son who's a high school teacher, and he doesn't get the summers off. The only time he takes a vacation is if I'm willing to pay for it. And then I have a passion for soccer, and I know somebody mentioned today about the sports. Tomorrow's the men's home opener at 4:00 o'clock, for anyone who has time to get out to the field tomorrow. So can't promise the weather will be good, but the game will be, so. That's all I have. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're adjourned.